Hi, everyone. My name is Krista Boyle and I am the Head of Communications for Cincinnati Public Schools. We are so excited to be here with you today. Thank you for joining us. I have just a couple of logistics that I'm going to go through and then I will turn it over to our superintendent for a welcome. So, Don, if you'll go to the first slide, please. So, there are several ways to ask questions. We do have a short, what we hope to be a short, presentation. And then you can either submit questions through the Q&amp;A function and everyone will be able to see those. Or you can also use the Raise Your Hand function if you would like to speak live. And you just hit the button that says Raise Your Hand. You'll be sent an invitation. And once you accept that, you'll be put in queue. We're just doing first come, first served. And we will call your name when it is your turn to talk. We would ask that people ask only one question so that we can get as many as possible. And then if you have a specific question that's kind of specific to your family, your child, your school, and you would like us to get back to you, you can send that to us in chat. And just please make sure to include your name and the school and your contact information. And we will make sure that we get back to you guys individually on any of those questions. So with that, I am very excited to turn it over to Superintendent Laura Mitchell.
Hello, families. We are so happy that you have chosen to spend some time with us here this afternoon. We are excited to be able to announce that we are going to be able to return to in-person learning through a blended model. And so, again, we are just really excited that you're here with us. Next slide, please. So I want to send a big thank you to you for many different reasons. One of the reasons that I want to thank you is that because of the work that you have been doing and all of the people in the city of Cincinnati, we are able to return to distance learning because our positivity rate has been stabilized for the Cincinnati area. So, thank you so much for wearing masks and social distancing and washing hands. And we really need that to continue as we welcome our students back to our buildings. Thank you also so much for working with us over the last several weeks as we were in distance learning. And so, we're just appreciative for all of the work and support that you've been able to give, not only our kids, your kids, but also our staff members. So, as I mentioned, the board has decided to move to a blended model based upon our data for the city of Cincinnati. And so, they have adopted a 1-2-2 model. And so, with this model, all students on Mondays will be in distance learning. However, during that time, they will have access to their teacher through Google Meet. And then there are two groupings, Group A and Group B. And each group will be in class face-to-face two days a week and then three days of distance learning. And so, this will actually be the format that we will use for the next several weeks. And we're excited, again, to be able to welcome our young people back into our buildings. Now, we have done a little bit of something that's a little bit different for a population of our students. Our preschool students as well as our students who are in specialized classrooms, those students really have had a very difficult time with distance learning. As you can imagine, a preschooler trying to learn how to read or their letters or how to count or adding and subtracting through a digital format has been very, very challenging. And so, for these students, as we continue to lay the groundwork for excellent teaching and learning, we are going to be welcoming these students back four days a week. Mondays will always be the distance learning day, but these students will be in face-to-face instruction four days a week, Tuesday through Friday. We do have a phased-in approach to our work. And we've actually decided to accelerate the phase-in approach based upon the feedback that we receive from many parents. And so, starting the week of October the 5th, we're going to welcome back 50% of our preschool students and our kids who are in our specialized classrooms. Those classrooms service students who have disabilities in terms of multiple disabilities or are students who are artistic. We will be welcoming 50% of them back starting on October the 5th. So, this will be a phased-in gradual approach. During that week, we will also welcome back our second kindergarten through second grade students on an AB schedule and also our seventh and eighth grade students on an AB schedule, again with Mondays being the remote day. And then the week of October the 12th, we will continue with preschool, pre-K through second grade, seventh and eighth grade, but we will be adding grades 3 through 6 and 9 through 12, which means that by the end of the week of October the 12th, we will have all of our kids back in session with us, half on any given day according to your AB group, with Mondays as a distance learning day with your teachers. All right, now, I would like to turn the next slides over to Sarah Trimble Oliver, who will talk about our safety protocols. In order for this to work, in terms of bringing our kids back with six feet of social distancing and all the precautions that Sarah will talk about, these things will be dependent upon us having a successful return to school for our students. So, thank you so much again for being with us today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining. Some of you may remember from one of our prior parent town halls or our other district communication that the Centers for Disease Control has released recommendations for schools on how they can reopen in the safest manner possible. And what you will see on the next slide is a list of those 31 recommendations from the CDC. Now, none of these are requirements or mandates for schools, but at CPS, we are implementing every single one of these 31 because we believe that creates the safest environment possible for our students and our staff. So, we have taken those 31 recommendations and developed our own district safety plan, which you will see a glimpse of on the next slide. That was initially released in early July and is available on our website for you to access. Included in our district safety plan are the top four safety precautions that you're going to see in our schools and will make school look different. Number one is six feet of social distancing in all areas. Number two is masks. Number three is a focus on hand hygiene. And number four is cleaning and disinfecting. We also have available on our district website the Employee and Student Guides to COVID-19 Safety. You can see this on the next slide and these are available on our website. And our teachers will be using the information in these guides to discuss and teach with our students over the next period of time before students come back into our buildings. So, we encourage you to also take a look at these guides and discuss it with your kids so that they are familiar with the new safety protocols before they come back. We also have a safe return video, which we would like to show you today, which we also encourage you to watch with your children and discuss it with them and even have them practice some of the safety measures that are shown in the video. All right.
It's time to go to school. You wake up feeling healthy, and that's great. Before you head off to the bus stop, make sure you have your backpack and a clean mask to wear for the day. Put your mask on so that it covers your nose and mouth. While you're waiting for the bus, stand apart from the other students. Make sure to fill the bus seats from back to front and sit facing forward. Please always sit by yourself unless you're with a sibling and continue wearing your mask over your nose and mouth. When you arrive at your school, only exit the bus when you're dismissed. Exit the bus in a single file. You'll see other students waiting for their health checks. When it's your turn, an adult will take your temperature by scanning your forehead and they'll ask you a few questions about how you're feeling.
How you doing today? How you doing?
Now, you can pick up your breakfast and go to your classroom. While walking in the hallway, be sure to give plenty of space to other students so that we can all stay safe. When you arrive at your classroom, an adult will remind you that we all need to sanitize our hands before entering. Your chairs will be spread apart and it's important for everyone's safety that you keep them that way. If anyone forgets, an adult will remind them to keep their distance. Remember to only use your own materials to do your schoolwork. You'll have to wear your mask at all times unless an adult tells you that you can have a mask break. Before meals, you'll need to wash your hands for 20 seconds. You'll be eating meals in your classroom. Take your mask off and put it on a paper towel near you while you eat. Be careful to keep your own food in your assigned area. After you're done eating, put your mask back on. Remember to only touch the loops on the side when putting the mask on or taking it off. You may get to go to recess. You'll want to keep your friends safe, so only use the equipment that has been assigned to you. When talking or playing with your friends, make sure to keep your distance. At the end of the school day, your teacher will tell you when you can go to your locker. If you don't have a locker, you'll gather your belongings and wave goodbye to your teachers and friends before you head home. Please follow adults' directions as you leave the building. We can't wait to see you.
Good afternoon, everybody. We certainly hope that you found that video helpful. My name is Shawna Murphy. And at this time, I'd like to provide you with a few updates and reminders. Next slide, please. So, our school calendar update, September 28th will be a Teacher Professional Development Day to allow us to have our final preparations put in place. And October 12th will be a shift. That will be a distance learning day. The principals will be sending a survey out this week. And the purpose is to send to children a blended model versus a stand-distance learning model if you are interested in enrolling in Cincinnati Digital Academy. We'll be hosting parent trainings about our safety protocols starting on September the 29th. So, please be on the lookout for those details. We will ask that you provide a testing consent form for all of our children. And then our bus cars, they should be arriving this week. But if you have any questions about transportation, please dial 363-RIDE. Next slide, please. New Ohio notification requirements. Please notify the school nurse if your child has a positive COVID-19 case within 24 hours. Cincinnati Public Schools will notify impacted individuals as well as the Cincinnati Health Department within a 24-hour period. Please ensure you have multiple ways to pick up your child from school during the day in the event they show symptoms of COVID-19 during the school day. AB groups were sent to parents and guardians. So, if you have any questions about those, please contact your school office. Next slide, please. Here's a list of a few important numbers for you in case you have any questions around technology, around Wi-Fi, transportation again, or customer service. And again, any questions about your child's group A or B, please call the school office. Next slide, please. And again, finally, I think I'm turning this back over to Krista Boyle, our communications chief.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, just a quick reminder, you can submit questions through Q&amp;A and then also raise your hand if you're interested in speaking live. I'm going to start by asking some of the most common questions that we're seeing in Q&amp;A. So, the first one is for Sarah Trimble Oliver. Would you mind talking a little bit about the HVAC system and what kind of filters we're using? Just what will the environment be like in schools?
Absolutely. So, this actually is one of the CDC recommendations. And so, we have modified our HVAC systems to include a daily flush-out, which means that external air is brought in and the used air is pushed out of the entire HVAC system. And that is scheduled on a daily basis. It runs first thing in the morning before anyone arrives at the building. And that is at every single one of our buildings. We have also scheduled increased changes of the air filters as well as a specific protocol. Or if there is a confirmed positive case in a building, there's a specific protocol to handle the HVAC system to isolate the area as well as change the air filter at that time.
Great, thank you very much. Sarah, while I have you, there are also several questions about mask breaks. Would you mind explaining why we're doing that and then how those will work as well?
Sure. This was actually a recommendation from the Director of Infectious Disease Control at Children's Hospital as a way to make wearing a mask all day more palatable. And so, we want to, it's most important to wear a mask when you're in closer proximity to people. So, to do that for a whole day for kids of all ages, well, they'd be difficult to get used to. And so, for a way to make that easier to handle, they suggest allowing mask breaks. They should be very short, infrequent, and there should be extreme close attention to the social distancing during that time.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Another question that we're seeing a lot of is what if families would like to keep students in a distance model versus going back to in-person and blended? Is there an option that is not CDA and that would keep them at their schools? So, we also know that we've received a lot of feedback about this one. We absolutely appreciate all of it. And we are working really hard to see if there are options that would accommodate that. In full transparency, and I think we talked about this at the board meeting, there are some technology challenges. But it is something that we are really working to try to figure out and make that an option. If you, there also were questions about if you enroll in CDA and then either this becomes an option or we go back to distance learning, can you switch? And the answer to that question is yes, you can enroll. That is open enrollment right now. So, I don't know if the leadership team has anything to add to either of those? Anything to chime in on? Not, we can go to the next question? Thank you. So, another question we're getting a lot of is about Montessori. And we understand that that is a challenge, especially for the younger kids. We really do have genuine space concerns and trying to make sure everyone is staying safe. So, please on that one, also know that we hear you and we understand. And at the moment, it really is a concern about space and number of kids in the classroom. So, thank you for that. Superintendent, I think this one might be for you and it's about data. How is data being reviewed and how will we know if we need to switch back to distance learning?
So, that's a great question. So, I know that there are data reviews that take place at our board meetings. And so, people may be under the impression that's the only time that we look at data. And we actually look at the data every single day. And so, we receive reports every single day, actually twice a day, even over the weekend, from the Cincinnati Health Department. And we look at that epidemiological curve to see what is the trend within the last 14 days and what's the trend within nine days of the last 14 days. We also look at the positivity rate to identify other people who are tested, what percentage are actually confirmed positive with COVID. We also look at the number of days it takes to get a test result back from a COVID assessment. And so, we are literally looking at that data on a daily basis. And we send that data to our board as well on a daily basis. And so, when there are major changes in the data, then we will do a report out to the board during a formal board meeting. So, just know that we are able to make very quick adjustments based upon the data to either move to more in-person instruction or to pull back to distance learning.
Great, thank you so much. There are also several questions about notification and how will parents be notified? I do, this is a good opportunity just to remind folks of the new requirements from the state of Ohio that asking parents to please let us know positive case and then we are also committed to making sure parents and the health department know about any positive case as well. So, we have a great process in place for that. We've been doing it as we've seen cases pop up among staff. So, I think we feel ready to execute that as students come back as well. Sarah, if you have anything to add, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I think you've covered it, Krista. The important thing to know is that we committed, actually many months ago, to making sure that all families are notified if there is a positive case in the building. And most recently, that has also become a mandate from the governor. And so, we will be in compliance with that.
That's great, thank you. Ms. Mott, this one is for you and it's about teacher-led instruction in the AB model. So, on Monday, all students will be in distance learning, doing their Google Meets with teachers. And then the rest of the week, we're switching A and B groups. So, for two days, students will be in person with their teacher. How should they think about the other two days when they're at home? And are there any resources or just what does that instruction look like on those two, other two days not in the classroom?
Thank you for the question. First off, the model had changed to a 1-2-2 because that Monday is critical. That Monday, the teachers will meet with Group A and B to give them instructions on that self-directed learning time. We are preparing another parent guide just for blended learning and it will be in multiple languages. That guide would have a variety of resources from our curriculum website, where there will be lessons and videos, support for socio-emotional learning, all on a one-stop page. So, that website is being updated now and should be available next week. Secondly, on those at-home learning days, it was very critical to get everyone proficient in Schoology. So, the students on those at-home learning days can access Schoology and lessons. There's videos and resources and study guides to support learning on those days. We will continue to have CPS TV as a resource as well. So, between our websites, the parent guides, Schoology, there's a variety of ways that we can support students at home. We will also have sample schedules of what a family can do to structure the day on those two days when students are home.
That's great, thank you so much. And then, so one more question. I'm just trying, I want to make sure we're getting all the ones that have kind of critical mass and then we'll go to the phone. So, for Ms. Murphy, lots of interest in Walnut. And when will people know more and kind of how are we thinking about?
Yeah, thank you, Krista. Thank you for the Wanted Hills families. We have been working really hard focusing on Wanted Hills High School. And we do have a plan. We just have received a lot of questions, a lot of input, which we value and appreciate. And so, we want to be very careful before we share that plan, making sure we have truly considered all of the input that we're given. So, very, very soon, you should have what that Wanted Hills plan is.
Great, thank you so much. All right, Fran, do we have anyone queued up who would like to ask a question?
We sure do. The first person in the queue is Ann. Please go ahead and unmike yourself and go forward with your question, please. Thank you. Ann, are you able to? There you go, okay.
Sorry about that. So, at this time, I am uncomfortable with sending my child back to in-person learning. And there are lots of other families that feel this way. My child has a unique 504 plan and CPS has worked with us to ensure that she receives the best education and individualized help she needs. She has become familiar with digital learning and is making progress. Switching to another school such as Digital Academy would be a huge change that we both do not want. I feel that parents such as myself that are trying to remain as safe as possible during these uncertain times should be provided the option to remain at their CPS school online, just as other parents have been provided the option to return to in-person learning if they choose to. I feel that I am being forced to make one of two decisions that are not in the best interest of my child. I have to either send my child back to school, which puts her health at risk and increases her chances of getting COVID-19, or disrupt my child's education by removing her from CPS and her teachers to start over elsewhere. There has to be better options. Will you please consider giving families the choice to remain online at CPS with the option to return to in-person learning every semester? These students could still be in class virtually with their assigned group via live stream or provide a recordings of their classroom sessions twice a week. They could also have the option to schedule time with their teachers via Google Meets so that they can ask questions and interact twice a week. I know that some parents are ready to send their children back to school and you have accommodated them. But please consider putting a plan in place to support families that are not comfortable with taking that risk. A plan that does not force us to choose between, sorry, putting our child's health at risk or being removed from CPS to enroll in Digital Academy. We feel left out. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ann. We appreciate your comment, we really do. We hear you. We definitely all have been receiving that feedback. So, thank you for taking the time to share that.
Yeah, Krista, if I could just jump in. So, first of all, I want to express to the parent who called in just how much we hear what you're saying and honor and respect everything that you're saying and know that we are working to make that happen. And so, as late as an hour ago, a team were meeting to talk about how we can make this happen for families because we really want to provide the very best. And I really understand everything that you said and it was totally reasonable. And so, we have a team that will continue that work on Friday morning, seeing how we can really work together to meet your needs. And I would invite Susan Bunty or Tiani Amad to jump in and speak to that only because I think it's important that you know that we're hearing you and we're working on making that happen.
Absolutely. So, I'm going to go back to something that Assistant Superintendent Murphy talked about, the survey. We're trying to figure out exactly the preference of individual parents so we can customize. Part of this is technology. So, we have developed a cross-functional department team to specifically look at that concern to see that we have the staffing and the technology in place to accommodate our families while keeping them in their school environment. So, that is in the works. Our next meeting is Friday and we hope to have something out soon for all of our community and family.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Superintendent. Were you going to say something?
The only other thing I was going to say is that it just like warms my heart that this parent, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but you gave us viable solutions that are acceptable to parents. And so, again, I cannot thank you enough for having the courage and advocating for your child. We really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Fran, who do we have next?
The next person in the queue is Andrew Monroe. Please go ahead and unmike yourself, Andrew, and go forth with your question.
Okay, well, let me get started off. I am a freshman in high school at Clark Montessori, but that isn't important. The important thing is I am 14 years old and I'm fearing for my life because of the decision that you guys are making right now. And right now, my mom has two choices. Either she lets me go to school and she lets me die or she sends me to the CDA and throws my entire future away. And so, I'm 14 years old and I am starting a student protest right now because you guys obviously aren't listening to us. Every time a parent comes on here to voice their concerns, you say this exact same empty words every single time. So, what I want to know is... So, what I want to know is, like, when you look at me, do you see a living, breathing human being? Or do you see a student who is expendable? Who you can go on social media and say, "Oh, it's so sad that we lost Andrew today", and then turn around and then have me replaced by another student within the next week? How are you guys going to sleep at night, knowing that you have blood on your hands? Because it is honestly disgusting what you are doing right now. Because I don't think you see what's going on right now because I have laid awake in bed having panic attacks. Because I know that if I go back to school, I'm, I'm, I might not die, but my great-grandmother is going to die, my grandma is going to die, my little brother's immunocompromised father is going to die. And I feel like you don't care about me, you don't care about my little brother, you don't care about my friends, and you don't care about our families. So, are you going to take responsibility for the blood that's going to be on your hands? Or are you just going to sit back and say, "Oops, sorry, we made a mistake"?
So, Andrew, thank you for your questions and your heartfelt concern. Please know that it is the desire of not only the administration, but the board to provide the very best education that we can. We do not feel as if we are putting people in danger with the plan that we have come up with according to the CDC guidelines, as well as consultation with physicians who work very closely with us on a weekly basis. There are, just as you feel as passionately about not returning to school, there are a lot of other students and a lot of other parents who do want their kids to return to school. So, we are offering multiple options in terms of returning to school or participating in distance learning through CDA. As was stated before, we are exploring an option for students to be able to stay at their homeschool. So, again, Andrew, thank you so much for your time and your heartfelt words, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. So, Ms. Bunty, I have a question for you about COVID testing, actually two. And the first is, what are the criteria and why would we test a child at school? And then, the second is, and you may, I'm not sure if we know the answer to this, but do you know, is it a nasal swab? I don't even know if there are other kinds of tests, but do we know what kind, like, how it gets? Yeah, thank you, go ahead.
So, thank you for that question. So, if students have parent or guardian consent to be tested, they can be COVID-tested at school. If, we also know that the test that we're using is the PCR test, which is a swab. So, it is in the nose. So, the other part of that is, when would students be tested? So, there's a nurse at every school. And when a student exhibits symptoms that could be COVID symptoms, that nurse will make the decision whether or not the child may be experiencing asthma symptoms, if the child has asthma, or a cluster of other symptoms that could possibly be related to something else. Then, they will make the decision whether or not to test. Those test results will be returned in an encrypted email, and parents will be notified both of the test itself and then of the results.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And so, I have another question about schoolwork if a student tests positive or if for some other reason, they're in quarantine. I don't, maybe for Ms. Mott, are, how should parents think about their children, you know, and their schoolwork while they're in a quarantine situation, or if they're sick?
Yes, we'll follow the same process, but all of the work, which can be accessed on Schoology. So, those assignments, logging in on Monday, and getting those assignments for the week, or possibly two weeks. And then, all of our students have the ability to submit work online through Schoology so they can get feedback from the work completed at home.
Okay, great, thank you. A couple of questions about kids in hallways, coming in and out. So, how will we safely make sure kids are going to and from lockers? And then, what about coming to and from school? So, Sarah, if you wouldn't mind addressing that piece?
Sure, so, back in July, we worked with each school to create certain portions of the safety plan that are specific to that building. And so, each high school especially has their own plan for lockers. Some have a plan for staggered locker visits, and some have put a pause on locker use for this year. So, it's individual to the school.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So, Fran, let's see who else is in queue to ask questions.
The next person in queue is Jeff Hammond. Jeff, please go ahead and unmute your microphone and go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate the administration. This is a challenging time, and it's not likely to go away. We think that this is the beginning of, I think all our actions should be done in the context of this is the 1918 flu, which then is with us until today. So, this is something we're going to keep with for a very long time as it changes and morphs. I was on the call last night, and I heard, and I heard the things about mask breaks. So, I, last night, I read the lengthy CDC guidelines about masks for schools, and there is nothing about mask breaks in there. The WHO has said it's an aerosolized virus now, which means they've cultured 16 feet away SARS-CoV-2. They've captured it right out of the air and cultured it. I looked at what other districts are doing. Other districts are saying that they're only allowing mask breaks outside when they're spread out, not indoors. Other states, like New Jersey, eliminated mask breaks from their guidance at the beginning part of August, about August 7th or so, because they realized it was not a good practice. I appreciate how that CPS, with us being such a large district, has tried to come up with some rules that maybe are one-size-fits-all from ages 3 to 19. But I would contend that in this situation, for high schools especially, it is really not the best practice, that lunch is a mask break. So, I'm going to ask if you guys can please reconsider and maybe refine this mask break policy for everybody's protection, for the, for the teachers that don't need to be exposed by the aerosolized breathing. There, we know that students are going to struggle anyway. Like, and masks are not going to be worn perfectly, and some are going to be more permeable and are, rather than less. And so, just asking if you guys can please hear our voices and take a second look at this and maybe refine the policy, please.
Yeah, and I can, I can jump in and respond because you are absolutely right. The information that we are getting does change on a very rapid basis. So, the CDC does give out new guidance very frequently as they learn new things about the spread of the virus. And so, we, we would be happy to revisit that and make sure that we have the most current information on mask breaks.
Would you mind, while we have you, there are some questions about lunch in general. Would you mind sharing how we're thinking about lunchtime?
Sure, so, as part of the CDC recommendations, they recommend meals to be served in classrooms and not in cafeterias where large groups of kids are mixing. And that is due to the idea of cohorting, and that is keeping this, the same groups of, small groups of kids together as much as possible. And so, even though it has, it does impact the school operations significantly, because we are told that is the safest scenario for lunch, that is what we are, are implementing. And so, the meal kiosks will be coming around to each classroom at lunchtime, and then, the students will be eating at their desk. We, as the gentleman said earlier, there's no way to eat with a mask on. And so, it will, there will be a temporary amount of time while students are seated that they can remove their mask and eat at their desk. And then, they will put the mask back on before they get up to place their trash and, and wash their hands, washing the hands before the meal and after the meal.
Okay, great, thank you. So, Fran, would you mind letting us know who's next in queue?
Absolutely, the next person in queue is Abby Friend. Abby, go ahead and unmute your microphone and go ahead with your question, please.
Hi, so, first of all, I want to up the student Andrew's concerns. I think that that was kind of brushed over. And I think that's really unfortunate, given the fact that he is a student and, you know, very bravely came on and, and shared his concerns. Secondly, my daughter's teacher is currently out sick with her son that has tested positive for COVID. Up until last week, she was in the school. I don't know what that would look like, since there are no students there, but I would imagine that she probably had come in contact with other teachers. Also, I think that there is a big gap here that hasn't really been addressed. The fact that when you get a COVID test, it's often days before you learn whether or not you're positive. So, that being said, there's, there's a large gap between teachers not being able to be in the classrooms while waiting for results, students not being able to be in the classroom while waiting for results, but also, all of that time before they were even tested where they may have been asymptomatic. I just feel like the, it's, parents are now able to express their concerns after you all have already made a decision. And you keep saying that, you know, we are going to have options to, to stay remote if we want to stay remote, but it really does feel like you all are just deciding that some students will die, some teachers will die, some parents will die, and we just have to deal with it. My daughter doesn't want to go back to school. She feels she's finally gotten the hang of online schooling. I just don't, I just don't really feel like these concerns are being taken seriously. That's all.
Thank you for your, your questions and comments. We, we do want to reiterate that we absolutely are hearing everybody. So, thank you for, for raising your hand and speaking. So, we, there are several questions about CDA, so I'm going to try to address those. Is it, can you maintain your spot for the year if you leave your homeschool and then go back? And the answer is yes, so you would not need to go through the lottery again. You can, we are see, holding spots for a year if you decide, or you decide to send your student, your child, to CDA. And then, there are a couple of questions about staff increases. And I will just share that, yes, we are increasing staff to accommodate the additional students. Ms. Mott, I don't know if you have anything else that you would like to share about staffing or CDA in general beyond that we are making sure that the teacher count matches this, the students?
Yes, you answered the question. We are looking at staffing. Since we got started, we've hired 24 teachers over at CDA. Because we have open enrollment there, we will continue to look at the student enrollment and the staffing needs, and we'll hire accordingly.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Ms. Bunty, question for you. So, are we doing trauma-informed training for teachers to help assist students through this time?
Yes, thank you for that question. We actually spent an entire school day before our students began in the distance learning model, focusing on professional development for every single one of our school-based staff. So, our security guards, our paraprofessionals, our teachers, engaged in a six-hour training on trauma-informed practices. In addition to that, we have several modules that teachers can participate in throughout the year. So, we believe that that is very, very, very important as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Question about positive cases in the household and if those should be reported. So, should parents only report their students? Or if someone else in the household also had a positive test? Not sure how we think about that.
So, Sarah, what does the guidance from the CDC say about that?
All right, so, just to clarify, Krista, this is if a, if a student may have been exposed to COVID but doesn't, doesn't, isn't positive for COVID themselves? Sure, so, the guidance for that, that's a great question, very common question. The guidance for anyone who has been exposed to a known COVID cause, positive case is that they will be asked to quarantine for 14 days. There is, there are, there are no other, the quarantine doesn't extend to contacts of the contacts, if you, if you know what I mean, the secondary, the second level. That is not, the quarantine doesn't extend to contacts of a contact, just to the individual student who was exposed.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that. So, there are also several questions about the data that was shared at the board meeting on Monday. And so, I do just want to clarify, there are some questions about where the data points met. And so, I know we had the Health Department, they were nice enough to come and participate in that meeting. But I don't know if we could maybe just quickly walk through the data and, not specifically, but just confirm that, that data points that we set out to cover were met and that that helped to drive the decision to go to blended learning?
So, the, the data points that were reviewed, there were four data points. The first one was a sustained daily decline in new cases using the seven-day moving average. And there were eight out of the 14 data points declining, which was one data point away from the nine, which is the CDC's recommendation. The second data point was the positivity rate, which was 3%, which the meets the 5% target, under 5%. The third data point is the, the state's, the governor's color coding system of, for Hamilton County being in yellow or orange, which we are, we are in orange. And the fourth data point is the time to get your, to, to get COVID test results back, which was in the, within the desired window of two days.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I just wanted to clear that up. Oh, go ahead, Superintendent.
Yeah, so, Sarah, would you please talk, though, about the, the data interpretation from the Cincinnati Health Department? So, for everyone listening, we had an epidemiologist and a physician from the Cincinnati Health Department present the, or translate the data for the board at our last board meeting, and spoke very clearly about the fact that according to their school guidance, Cincinnati public is in a position, now, this isn't using CPS data or interpretation, this is specific data from the Health Department, but we are in position to go back to a blended learning format as reported by the Health Department. So, Sarah, would you talk about that document and guidance that's coming from the Cincinnati Health Department?
Yes, thank you. So, based on the data that was presented at that last board meeting, the Cincinnati Health Department, the Hamilton County Health Department, Children's Hospital, and the Health Collaborative, which are all regional, regional health organizations, put our, our community data within a category of yellow, which they recommend that districts may proceed with a blended or a hybrid return to school if they can implement the safety protocols that are, that are recommended. Those are the four main, so, safety protocols. Those are the four main safety protocols that we talked about earlier. And that was the Health Department's presentation on Monday night.
Terrific. Thank you for clarifying that. I think that's really helpful. So there are also several questions about the PD day. And so I think probably many or all of you saw, we originally were scheduled to have a PD day with no students on the 12th. Because we are moving to a blended model, we thought it was really important that staff and teachers have time to just do final planning and preparation and that that be able to happen before the 5th. So we did swap. And so Monday will be a PD day with no students. And then the 12th, so October 12th, will be a distance learning day for all students as part of either the 122 or 14 schedule. And that would be for preschoolers and specialty class. I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse people by throwing out that. That's not a different model. It just is for those groups. So I think, let's, I think we have time for one more question. So let's do that. And then I do want to be respectful of everybody's time and keep us within the hour. So then we'll have the Superintendent close us out after that. So one final question, please.
Okay, the next person in the queue is Steve Munday. Steve, go ahead and unmute your microphone and go ahead with your question, please.
Hi there. My daughter, who's a student at Clark, would like to ask a question. Just before she does, I want to add an emphatic echo to those who are concerned about the choice between safety and losing the expertise of their teachers and being forced to go to CDA. But let my daughter speak.
So one of the main things for me is, like, for one of my friends, we, she has a lung condition where she gets lung infections very often. So she hasn't been able to go out at all. And I know Clark is a wonderful fit for her, which is my school. And so at this point, she's almost being forced to go to virtual and lose the teachers that she's already made a bond with and that know her and know how she learns. So are you just expecting everyone who just kind of got an unlucky draw in life to just sacrifice their quality of knowledge, of learning, just because of, oh, we can have our schools open now?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time to speak. It is always really important to hear from students. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the Superintendent, who I can see has unmuted. So go ahead.
So I do want to respond to the student from Clark. We are looking at how we may be able to keep students with their homeschool. As was mentioned earlier, we met about this today, right before coming to this meeting. And quite honestly, we've talked about this for quite a while. The one issue or concern that we've had is to be able to livestream into classrooms. We don't have the bandwidth to allow that to happen. And trust me, we have talked about this with our IT chief over and over again as to why this cannot happen. And so what we are working on now is how to make this happen. That may not be exactly a livestream into the classrooms, but may allow our students to be able to remain at their homeschool. So just know that we are working on it, that our team will be working on it again Friday, and we'll be able to give some additional information about that next week.
We wish you, we wish you every success.
Thank you. We can use all the positive wishes there are in the whole world, so thanks for that. We understand how much people love their schools. You know, we often say that parents don't enroll in Cincinnati Public Schools. They enroll in their school. And they know their school, they trust their teachers, they trust their principals. And so we know how important that connection is. And so know that we are working really hard to make that happen for all of our students who wish to stay at home or don't feel comfortable or safe enough to leave their home. So we are working on that for your benefit. So I want to thank everyone to, for coming to this town hall. We really do want to hear the voices of our students as well as our parents. And please know that we take copious notes and we're working hard to integrate many of the things inside of our plans. I will say that this is a tough situation that we're all in as a country, as a world. And of course, we really cannot accommodate everyone's need. And so there are some people who really want us to go back to school. There are some hundreds of people who have written in to say, I want my kid back in school five days a week. But we also know that there are a lot of parents who are not opting to send their child back. And we know that it is a very personal, individual parental decision, and we totally respect that. And so we're really working to make sure that we can come up with a solution for everyone. And so we hear what you're saying. Although you, you may not see your exact thought in our plans, know that we are considering all of the options and all of the feedback from many, many stakeholders who we engage with on a daily basis. So thanks for being with us. Tune in next week to hear more about the plan for the district during our next board meeting, which will be on Wednesday, September 30th. We look forward to hearing from you and from seeing you. So thanks again, everyone, and have a good evening. Bye.
Thank you. Two quick, really housekeeping things. There is a survey as you exit, so you can be sure to take that. And then we will make sure that we post FAQs for everybody to capture your questions. So thanks, everybody.